Planning Commission meeting.
Oh.
Thanks. Let's start this planning commission meeting for the 11th of March. Or at four o'clock, this clock needs to be changed. So for the consent agenda, it just looks like the notes from February 25th. Any comments on those notes? No. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Erica, could you do a roll call vote?
Sure.
Thank you.
As our planning manager Levi Hill mentioned, Commissioner Dawson will be absent as well as Commissioner Fletcher. So today we have our Chair Bluth.
Here.
Vice Chair Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
And Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
And Commissioner Brassfield is also absent as of right now. Staff members present, we have our planning manager Levi Hill, and we have myself Recording Secretary Erica Brera. I can go ahead and let the public know how to participate. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/Agendas. Remote commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Thanks, Erica.
You're welcome.
So back to the consent agenda, any comments on the minutes?
I guess I'll recuse because I wasn't here.
Should we postpone that then till?
Epstein.
We can still take a vote as long as we have a simple majority from those present. So we have four, so if it's still got approved on a three out of the four, it would still pass.
But if two, if two were not.
Two, then we should probably just wait till the next meeting.
Because I wasn't here.
Yeah, let's wait for the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I'll make the motion to continue this item. The approval of the minutes until a further meeting.
Before we do that, let's go ahead and just check for public comment on the consent agenda.
Any comment in the chambers for the minutes? No? Anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
We have a motion from Commissioner Latassa.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Erica, could you do a roll call vote for that?
Sure, Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Great, that's been approved.
Thank you. Any comments from people in chambers or anything that's not on our? Could you speak, Aman?
Julie Gorman, and Planning Commission. I own the property at 1099 Del Monte Avenue, which is the road to rooter property. And you may have noticed that it's been vacant for over three years, and here's the reason why. In 2016, the city adopted the waterfront master plan, which re-zoned the waterfront area to plan community waterfront. The ordinance stated, "This ordinance shall be in full force and effect automatically after Coastal Commission approval." Staff submitted the rezoning to the Coastal Commission for approval, but because the application did not include the zoning ordinance, the Coastal Commission denied the rezoning. The waterfront master plan was adopted as a specific plan, and therefore it's not part of Chapter 38, the city's zoning ordinance. The city rezoned the waterfront area regardless, which included my property, and city-owned properties zoned open space in the coastal zone area, which is a violation of City Charter Section 2.75, as voter approval was required to do so. In 2021, I started looking for a new tenant, and staff in the planning department stated in an email, I'm sorry, "The property was zone planned, community waterfront, and the limited uses were that of the East Catalis window on the bay, which included a public restroom, big tackle shop, and equipment rental." The zoning map showed my property's zone planned, community waterfront, and the Planning Commission and City Council approved projects due to the projects being consistent with the waterfront master plan and the zoning. It was impossible for me to find a tenant for these uses, and the reason my property remained vacant. After discovering the Coastal Commission had not approved the rezoning, my attorney contacted Ms. Davy, and she agreed the rezoning had not been approved, and the zoning map was corrected to show my property as Zone C2. After all of this, staff is now proposing that a business be issued a zoning clearance permit before occupying my property or before being issued a building permit, when just a few months ago, the gun shop at 301 Ocean was issued a business license for the principally permitted use of retail to lawfully occupy the property. So in the event the C1 zoning is amended, no longer allowing the retail sales of firearms and ammunition, the business will be able to remain indefinitely as a non-conforming use. After that business license was issued, for the regulatory purposes, the gun shop then submitted an application and was issued a building permit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any others have a comment on the agenda?
It seems like it really should be on the agenda item that we're discussing and not on.
It does appear at the end of that comment, it did seem that it was pertinent to an agendized item, but it started very general, but I would agree.
Can she restate during the meeting?
If she would like to.
Okay, don't go away, don't go away.
Erica, anybody online for?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Okay. All right, let's move to the public appearance items. First item is recommend City Council amend the zoning code to require new businesses and existing businesses that were changing the type or use of location obtain a zoning clearance permit. Levi, do you have a presentation for us?
I do, thank you. I'll pull up the presentation right now. Okay, thank you, Chair Bluth. My name is Levi Hill, Planning Manager for the City of Monterey, and I'll be presenting tonight's public hearing items. First item being the proposed zoning amendment to create and establish a zoning clearance permit process in Chapter 38. We'll get into the specifics. So the staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending the City Council amend the zoning code to require new businesses and existing businesses that are changing the type of use or location to obtain a zoning clearance permit. So a little bit of background as to why this is being proposed. The Monterey City Code, Section 19-2, does state that the city business license ordinance is not regulatory, however, it is for revenue generating purposes only. What that means is regulatory is essentially the business license is a taxation tool, not a permitting tool. So that's what's meant by revenue generating purpose. Currently, there is no mechanism for the city to review uses for zoning compliance where no discretionary action or building permit is required, meaning that a business owner could potentially occupy a space and without any really knowledge not realize that that use is unpermitted in that space because there's no really trigger mechanism for them to pull any necessary permits or inquire with the city as to whether or not it's a permitted use. And because of that, there's potential that exists for unpermitted uses to be established and for significant expense to be incurred for business owners just to find out at a later date that that is an unpermitted use in that zone. Which is why staff's proposing the proposed amendment, which is a zoning clearance permit. So this would not replace the business license requirement, however, this would be an additional requirement that would require an applicant to apply for a zoning clearance permit and where that would be reviewed to determine whether a business meets the zoning requirements for the proposed location and for the city to give a formal approval for the establishment of that business use at that location, ensuring the protection for the business owner. And so as noted on this slide, it helps provide certainty to potential business owners and operators before entering into leases or spending significant investment on tenant improvements or any other needs for the business for a use that's not actually permitted under the city's zoning. And so this is an excerpt out of the ordinance as to when a zoning clearance permit would be required. And that, as you see here, is for new and expanded use of a site and each new or expanded structure prior to the issuance of building permit, grading permit, certificate of occupancy, or utility service connection. Also would apply for all new businesses to the city that are required to have a business license and for all existing businesses that are required to have business licenses pursuant to the city code that are changing the type of use or location within the city. So a distinction to be made there is that this would not apply to a use that has been previously occupying a space and has valid business licenses for previous years. So this would be for new business, the only way a business of that that would fall under that category would have to get a zoning clearance permit is they were changing the use, location, or expanding the use of that use. And with that, the staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending the City Council amend the zoning code to require new businesses and existing businesses that are changing the type of use or location obtain a zoning clearance permit. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Levi?
Yeah, this is a very interesting situation that Ms. Gorman has brought up. But I want to go back to two weeks ago when the applicant wanted to set up massage establishment on the second floor of the Ardway Building, and they were moving from an existing place, and the people were not informed correctly that the place they were moving from, if they changed the use, they thought that this would allow them to carry that use to the Ardway Building. And then, because they thought there was going to be a finite number of massage establishments on Altrada. But they were misinformed, and so the thing didn't pass. But would that have been a good example of this zoning clearance permit?
Not exactly, simply because that use required a use permit. So this would not replace that process. So that's a, so massage establishments are identified as uses that are permitted with the approval of the conditional use permit.
Okay.
So that's a discretionary action, so that type of use would always have to come before either the zoning administrator or this group for approval of that use permit, because it's not a quote-unquote principally permitted use. So this action tonight would only apply to those uses that don't require that discretionary action.
Okay.
And for, so it would just be for uses that otherwise, so if you required a use permit, you would go through that process.
Right. So not to leave too far ahead, but wouldn't a gun shop require a use permit, conditional use permit?
Under the, now obviously there's been some recent council action on that, but you know, previous to that council action, the answer to that is no, it would actually fall under the umbrella of retail sales. Now, there's been some recent council action that has placed some limits on that particular use. So that's no longer exactly the way it is now. But previously, that's not a, when a use is not specifically defined in the zoning ordinance, it is either captured under the umbrella of a more general use or it's prohibited based on its omission from the zoning ordinance. It just depends on if it falls under the umbrella of a more general definition in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Peter?
Thank you, Levi. Would the proposed zoning clearance procedure be considered ministerial and unappealable?
It would be because it is a zoning clearance check for compliance with, there's no discretion to it, either your principally permitted use meeting all the zoning standards or you're not.
And so hypothetically, an applicant could choose to submit an application, knowing that it's going to eventually be denied by the ZA and could appeal that.
Well, are you speaking, when you say an application, application for a zoning clearance?
Not for a zoning clearance, no, for a use.
For a use permit, correct. So we, well, you can only apply for a use permit if it's specifically listed in the use table as permitted with a conditional use permit approval.
Well, that's, you could only approve it that way, but you could still apply for.
Not if it's not listed in the use table as permitted with a use permit. Yeah, it's considered a prohibited use at that point.
One thing that kind of struck me after reading the report and the letters that we received is this whole kind of nexus between business licenses and the regulatory aspects of this zoning clearance process. And you're stating that, well, that this doesn't really regulate business licenses. But yet, when I read, when we read the report, the under discussion, it seems like there's some kind of a link here. The city is proposing a zoning clearance permit procedure to determine whether a business meets the zoning requirements for a particular location and to approve, and this is the key here, and to approve the establishment of the business. So that, you know, approving the establishment of a business seems to me awfully similar to what a business license is all about.
Yeah, based on the legal guidance that we've been given, that's not the case. So the business license is more or less ministerial as well. You apply for a business license, if it's a complete application, business license is issued. Now, operating a business in compliance with the zoning requirements of the code is different. And the zoning code outlines specific uses that are permitted in specific zones, and the business license process doesn't take that into account at all. And legally is not allowed to.
Right, and then, and the follow-up is that the, when somebody does apply for a business license, there is no planning review on that.
And you can see where that creates a confusion, where you apply for a business license with the city, that gets issued, and one could infer that that means your use is allowed in that zone and the city is granting that use. But that's not necessarily true, and that's what we're trying to fix that gap with this amendment.
Right, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Do you have?
So I know in the residential part of the zoning ordinance, there are certain situations of non-conforming uses, setbacks, for instance, where you're, an applicant is allowed to continue the enjoyment of that non-conforming thing, as long as it doesn't go over a certain threshold, usually. And there are specifics in the zoning ordinance about that. Is there anything in the ordinance that allows expansion of non-conforming commercial uses with thresholds?
So.
There are a lot of non-conforming businesses in the city, and so they want to, you know, add a little shed or whatever. You know, there's some incidental things that are still allowed for an existing non-conforming use.
Yeah, so in the way of expansion, most expansions would trigger the requirement for the zoning clearance. That does take into account non-conforming businesses. Like I said, this would only apply to a business that's new, if it's an existing business, this would only apply if you're changing your use or if you're changing locations, that would trigger it. But as you see here, number one here on the slide shows that for each new or expanded use of a site, you would be required to get a zoning clearance permit, so that would then require you to be found to be a permitted use in that zone. So to answer your question, there would be limitations on the expansion. Now, there is certain levels of expansion allowed under the non-conforming section of the zoning code. As you've kind of alluded to, there's different thresholds. So it's not to say that it's necessarily, you wouldn't be allowed to expand a use that's non-conforming. It would revert back to that non-conforming section. This amendment would, however, require the zoning clearance be issued and reviewed.
So let's say a non-conforming restaurant wants at a storied shed, you know, and it meets setbacks and all that other stuff, they they would, they would have to get a zoning clearance.
Yes, that or a use permit. So this non-conforming section of the code lots of times will trigger a use permit to expand any type of non-conforming use. So in that instance, you would be getting the use permit, which becomes a discretionary action, which is kind of, which is this, but in discretionary form. So that type of change would most likely come before the Planning Commission for a use permit approval.
Are there exceptions in the existing ordinance for certain businesses that are non-conforming situations? Because it is, it's the non-conforming part of the zoning ordinance, right?
Correct.
Or existing non-conforming, that's the sort of key phrase. So existing non-conforming, there are exceptions or, you know, if you don't go over a certain height or, I don't, I forget what the rules are, but there is some language like that. So let's say they're just adding a little shed, you know, and it would, under the existing zoning ordinance, they would be allowed to do that?
Let me take a look, I'm going to pull up the non-conforming section and then we can, I'll probably tailor the search just to the uses since, rather than structures, because structures gets a little bit more.
I'm just trying to avoid unnecessary paperwork for some businesses.
So when it comes to non-conforming uses, it's pretty limited. I think you, you kind of touched on the one instance where it looks like you have the ability to expand a non-conforming use is pretty specific to the Planning Commission may allow a structure housing a non-conforming residential use in the R District to be altered or enlarged by adding not more than 10%. So I think that's where you're thinking of the threshold. Elsewhere in this section, it's pretty, pretty straightforward that no structure partially occupied by a non-conforming use shall be moved, altered, or enlarged in such a way to permit the enlargement. So for commercial uses, it seems like it's pretty cut and dry that you're not allowed to enlarge any non-conformity in terms of use.
Well, one other question. So what would be the typical application process for somebody who's, they want to change an existing retail into a deli or something that's, that's, doesn't require a use permit, like what would the fee and the timing be?
So, yeah, so let's, assuming that retail and deli fall under different use categories, so we would just, we'll just operate on that assumption. And so basically, they would fill out an application for a zoning clearance permit that would get submitted, it's administrative, so it's reviewed by staff. The ordinance says Community Development Director or Designee, so that's going to be someone probably in planning staff would review that application. And then what they're going to be reviewing that for is to make sure it's a permitted use and to make sure it meets any specific development standards required for that use. So if there's a change in the parking requirement, if there's a change in landscaping development standards, but primarily the use is permitted in that zone is what we're looking for. So that would get reviewed by staff, if everything is compliant and conforms to the zone, that would get approved. Again, I don't want to convoluted with the business license, because the business license is probably in this scenario already approved, because that's a taxation tool that's pretty much automatic. So at that point, you've had your business license approval, your zoning clearance permit, you now can legally operate your business.
Right. What would the fee be?
I don't believe there's a fee outlined in the ordinance, let me take a look.
I think the question, is it a flat fee or is it a?
It would be a flat, it would be a flat fee.
Okay.
Most of our, yeah, it doesn't look like there's a fee identified, so we'd be looking for council to adopt that with the next fee schedule.
And I guess there would be submittal requirements depending on parking and all that kind of stuff. Probably have to submit some kind of plan.
A plan or lots of that, lots of that can be verified by planning staff without necessarily a plan being submitted. It's a little bit case by case, but yeah, some additional information was required in order to confirm that all the requirements are being met, it's possible.
Was there some number of cases that came before staff that made this seem necessary?
Yeah, it's not that uncommon that we, so what would typically happen without this amendment is staff is notified of business licenses that are approved by our finance department, so that's shared with us. And it's not uncommon for us to see that list and see businesses that are being approved for business licenses that are not permitted in those zones. So naturally, we reach out to those people, let them know that, and by that time, they're quite frustrated that that's when they're hearing about, that their use is not permitted in the zone. So this is after, this has happened a number of times within.
Is there any inclination on the city's part to require zoning clearance prior to getting a business license?
So we can't make this a requirement? I don't, I can confirm a city attorney's office, but I believe the issue was is that we can't make this a requirement for the issuance of the business license, because the two are, it's, one's just simply a taxation revenue generating by the wording of the code, and the other is actually granting approval for the zoning of the business.
So even if it's not a requirement, would it not be prudent or courteous for the?
It would certainly be identified in the business license process that this is something they need to obtain. So it would definitely still, so they have a list of requirements even beyond business licenses of what an applicant opening a business would need to get, so this would certainly be communicated to an applicant, whether if, even if not a requirement, it would be some disclaimer language on the application itself stating that that business license doesn't grant you zoning approval, you would need to apply for this other permit in order to do that, so.
And especially if they didn't have an address. Especially if they had a business that needed a license, but they didn't have an address yet.
Right.
Right, and what would the, what would the review time be for staff on something like this?
So, yeah, I mean, this is pretty straightforward, compliance review. I mean, most of these types of things, we look for a 10-business-day turnaround on ministerial permits like this.
Levi, do you have any comments regarding the letters that we received? They were focused on this whole ammunition part of the thing, and I, quite frankly, I don't understand the connection, and maybe I'm missing something, but could you illuminate us on why we got these letters?
Sure, and yeah, on the written comments, and then obviously we'll still take public comment, but I'll touch on the ones we've already received. And yeah, I think I would agree, I think there's other items out there that are maybe getting, are flowing into this conversation. I don't think the two are necessarily directly connected, I think, but if I, in reading the comments, both the written comments received, it seems that there is a emphasis being placed on existing businesses and those, the ability for those businesses to continue to operate and, and with the approval of this, and as I stated before, if it's a existing business and staying in the same location that has had a business license issued to it previously, they would not be required to get a zoning clearance permit.
And that's what's confusing to me, because I understand that, but when I read these letters, it seemed like they were making a mountain out of a molehill.
And that's what's confusing to me because I understand that, but when I read these letters, it seemed like they were making a, a mountain out of a molehill.
Yes. Uh, it, it, yeah, that, I seem to be a little bit of a misunderstanding perhaps from what the requirement of the ordinance was, how it was going to impact existing businesses. So happy that that maybe hopefully is clarified now.
Thank you.
To follow up with Dan's question, maybe you could, and what Peter was saying, can you reflect with the same way on Ms. Gorman's issue with the rural router building? How does that play?
So there's a little bit more to that, that as, as you heard in the comments, there's, there's more to that than actually impacts this zoning. And maybe she can, she can elaborate more in her public comment, how it specifically is connected to this proposed amendment. She is correct. There was some confusion over time of what the particular zoning of that property should be based on the approvals that, that, that covered the waterfront master plan area and how the relationship of those approvals and approvals of the coastal commission certification that was required afterwards for those rezonings to become effective. There, she is 100% correct. There is confusion, was confusion as to the effectiveness of that. That's since been clarified. The waterfront master plan is not in effect as it stands today due to the fact that the coastal commission did not fully certify the waterfront master plan. So based on the language of the council action in that ordinance, that those zonings are not, did not, that waterfront master plan did not go into full effect based on that. So those properties in that area revert back to the zoning, or I shouldn't say revert. They were never technically rezoned in the first place, but the map that was showing that the waterfront master plan now shows the zonings prior to that action being taken, because the coastal commission still to this day has not certified the waterfront master plan. So it's not in effect today. So I think that clarifies the first part. Again, I'm not sure how it necessarily impacts what this proposed amendment, and maybe she can elaborate more in her comment.
So the set of rules that this lady thought she was applying against is not the set of rules that's in effect today. Set of rules is not the waterfront master plan. The set of rules is whatever preceded that.
Yeah, I believe the subject property zone C2. So it is, uh, so the permitted uses for that particular property are regulated by the C2 chapter of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Of course.
I have a question.
And of course I should also mention, there's, there is also, there is a certified coastal document for that area. It's not the waterfront master plan, rather it's the harbor LUP, which is a land use plan certified. So there's also use limitations in that as well.
Okay.
But with this, um, I mean, as a zone C2, but with zoning clearance permit process discussing, the city council goes ahead and approves that, but there then be an impact on Ms. Gorman's property in some point?
Based on how I'm reading it, only if there is an expansion of the use, I believe there's already a business license that's been issued for that, for the use in that structure. So based on my reading of the ordinance, if it's an existing use with a business license in the same location, then they would not be required to get the zoning clearance permit. Unless they were expanding or expanded the use, expanding a structure or something like that.
So it sounds like the waterfront master plan got hung up with the coastal commission. Is, is there a pending application with the coastal commission to resolve this?
So the approach the city is taking to resolve it is rather than trying to piecemeal the waterfront master plan and, and focus efforts on getting that fully certified is to focus more on the broader LCP completion and getting the entire coastal zone certified with a certified land use plan that would incorporate the policies of the waterfront master plan. So to answer your question, the city is not actively pursuing certification of the waterfront master plan. Rather, the city is working on getting an entire local coastal program certified by the coastal commission.
Thanks.
Any other questions before we go to public comment? Um, anybody in chambers like to make a comment on this project, Ms. Gorman?
Julie Gorman. And first I want to say the coastal commission rejected the waterfront, the rezoning four months after it was approved. It wasn't like you guys just found out. Okay, I'm opposed to this zoning clearance permit and amending the zoning ordinance. Staff states a business license is not issued for regulatory purposes, which is incorrect. A business license is issued for regulatory purposes for a business with a principally permitted use located within the city limits, which assures the business if the zoning is amended or the property is rezoned planned community waterfront, no longer allowing the business use, they can remain as a nonconforming use and the property gets to keep that use. In 2013, the court of appeal for the sixth appellate district ruled in the city of Monterey's favor, in which the city's position was that the business license for principally permitted use was issued for regulatory purposes. Staff is now proposing to overrule the sixth appellate district court's decision. According to staff, they're saying it's only for revenue purposes. So if I submitted an application for a business license for horseback riding on the beach at my property, you're going to issue me that and you have no way to kick me out. And you're going to issue me a building permit to change the building to horse stables. You are wrong. Section 3812 allows the community development director to, to prohibit any, any principally permitted use. A major, a majority of the businesses are located in the downtown lighthouse and North Fremont regulatory specific plans, which are not part of chapter 38, the city zoning ordinance, and therefore will not be required to be issued a zoning clearance permit prior to occupying a property. The city must treat all properly, all properties equally when enacting a new regulation. And they're not, as staff is not proposing to amend the downtown lighthouse and North Fremont specific plans. My property is zone C2 and a business will be required to be issued a zoning clearance permit prior to occupying the property, being issued a building permit and can't change the structure or enlarge the building. But if that same business occupies a property on Avrata Street with its own planned community downtown, the business is not subjected to the requirements. Also, uh, where, okay, the zoning clearance permit has no way for anybody to appeal it. Uh, the community development directors is final. And you guys might remember the cannabis lab, they were allowed to appeal.
That's your comment. Anybody else in chambers have a comment? Erica, anybody online?
Um, I see one attendee online, however, their hand is not raised.
Okay, thanks. Levi, any comments on Ms. Gorman's?
Yeah, I think there is a number of statements made there. Uh, I think some, some were missing in accuracy. I think, uh, I'll try to pinpoint the, the highlights. I think the, the big one talks about equity and applying the same rules across. The specific plans have sections in there about applicability. And they also have administrative sections that are clear where there are administrative items that are not addressed in the specific plan that the zoning code applies in those instances. So that would be one of these types of situations. As you can imagine, most of our commercial businesses are located in our specific plan areas. So this would not be all that effective if it was not applicable in the specific plan area. So it is, uh, it's just not being written into the text of the specific plans, rather it reverts back to the zoning code. As far as timeframe and, and the specific property being rezoned, I, I don't want to get too far into that because I don't think it's relevant to the proposed amendment.
Okay. Well, let's pull back for discussion.
I guess I have one more question for Levi. The, um, what, uh, what involvement has a city attorney had in this proposed zoning amendment?
A significant involvement. Yeah, that's, I mean, staff, planning staff does not make the, we try to avoid making the legal interpretations of the code. Yeah.
And what about appeals? The, if a zoning clearance is denied?
So the city does have an appeals hearing board. I, I would have to, I, I hesitate to answer because I'm not 100% positive, but that's definitely something I can get clarification on before this goes before a council and likely would like to. But I'm not sure. I would want to check with the city attorney's office on what that process. There typically isn't a, is, is an appeal process for things, even ministerial things typically can be appealed to either like for a building permit, lots of times you're going to appeal something to the building official, to, uh, you know, various, you know, tree removals that are denied, get appealed to appeals hearing board. So, um, there typically is a, is an administrative remedy process. I, I just don't want to speculate right now.
That brings up a, a response for me. If, if that is the case, would it be helpful to include that language in this proposed ordinance so that people are not left with the, the thought that, well, gee, what do I do now?
Yeah, we, and we would certainly include, if, if that is the case, we would obviously include any of that language, just like we do at these meetings when an action is made, it's appealable. We're always sure to communicate that to the public that if you're unhappy with this decision, it's appealable to, you know, the city council or it's appealable. We would do the same thing on any zoning clearance permit that's approved or denied. I should say, if it's denied, we would put on there that this is appealable to whatever group by whatever timeframe. I just can't say with specificity who that group would be and what that.
So the remedy could be there, but the body who makes the remedy, whether it's the appeals board, city council, planning commission, whatnot, has not been identified yet?
It may be, it may be already.
Commission. I actually, before this hearing, I, I went into the zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance, or the municipal code and looked up the whole procedure for appeals for zoning issues. And correct me if I'm wrong, but typically they are only for discretionary action items, not ministerial. And so what Levi is suggesting is that we do, the city does have other appeal boards.
Okay.
There's the bill, the building appeals board.
Yes.
There's another, there's a couple others. And it would be, I think, highly advisable to look into that and to insert the appropriate language.
Would agree.
As part of this.
Yeah, I would agree.
Well, it sounds like a good motion.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
You know, it is a good motion. There's something about this that is thorny. And I, I, I would welcome a continuance for the appeal reason. And I would also welcome a continuance to allow a fuller forum of the planning commission to review it. What, what, what is thorny about this? I guess the specific case that's being brought up on Del Monte. And there's something about it that I'm, uh, you know, maybe I just need to study it more to, to understand what the implications are. You know, it's what might be just my misunderstanding of it. But anyways, I would welcome an appeal at least to clarify the appeal process.
Is there a second for that?
You would welcome a continuation to clarify
Yes.
the appeal process, and I would agree with that.
Levi, is there any, anything pressing on this that would require us to act in a streamlined manner?
I mean, we, we are pretty focused on getting this through to council so that we can, you know, fill that gap in regulatory approval versus business license approval. So it is definitely something staff's hoping to get adopted sooner rather than later, especially considering there's with ordinance updates, 32 readings and then a 30 day effective period from there. So we're, we're looking at months out if this gets continued. So that, that creates a little bit of a constraint on staff. I, I'm hearing the concerns from the commission and they're all valid and, and certainly agree. But none of these are things that we could not get addressed prior to this going to council.
So we could just state my comments regarding this continuance motion is I, I'm not in favor of a continuance. We have two commissioners who are absent, but that was their choice for whatever reason. I frankly believe that a lot of the points that were raised in the letters that we received were based on misinformation and quite, and in fact, it was a little confusing to read actually because of that. I think the, uh, the zoning clearance permit procedure is pretty straightforward. It's, it's concise. I'm of the opinion that we just go ahead and make a recommendation for approval. That's where I stand.
But we have a request for the continuance in a second. So why don't we just vote on that?
I don't think we had a formal, I don't think we had a formal motion for the continuance.
Formal motion, but I think I would like to, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to allow staff to clarify the appeal process.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Um, Erica, could you do a roll call vote for the continuance?
Did, can, can we just check? I'm sorry. Do we confirm that there's no other people online for public comment?
Yeah, I thought we did and there was only hand raised and.
Just want to confirm before we move forward.
I don't currently see hands raised online. Do you want me to go ahead and remind them how to participate? Once again, information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov slash agendas. So once again, that's monterey.gov forward slash agendas, and I currently see no hands raised.
Okay. Um, Erica, could you do the roll call vote for that?
Sure. Chair Bluth?
No.
Okay. Vice Chair Silva?
No.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Latasa?
Yes.
So we have a tie. But what do we do with it?
No, it simply failed. You didn't have, it didn't have a majority.
Okay. Do we have a?
I'm going to make a motion that we recommend approval to the city council to adopt the zoning clearance permit procedure and to include sufficient language for an appeal process to be conveyed to the applicants.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So Erica, we have a motion in the second. Could you please do a roll call?
Sure. Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Latasa?
Yeah.
Hey, that motion carries with a vote of four.
Thank you. Okay, so next item on the public appearance items is accepting the 2024 general plan annual report for review and comment. Levi, are you going to give us a presentation on that as well?
I am.
Thank you.
It's 140 pages, right?
Yep, I've got it.
I'm actually going to read it all. So
Are you?
Just settle in and.
Okay.
Maybe we could move outdoors. It's a nice day.
No. All right. Um, thank you, Levi Hill, planning manager, again, presenting this item. Uh, and this is a presentation of the general plan, uh, the 2024 general plan annual report, asking the planning commission to, uh, adopt a resolution accepting the 2024 general plan annual report for review and comment. So we'll get into it. So just a little bit of background, uh, the city's general plan was last updated, uh, as you're all aware, July 16th, 2024, where we updated the land use, housing, safety and circulation elements of the general plan. Included in that update was various programs and policies to guide development in each one of those elements or, yeah, elements. And that, uh, full list of programs and policies was included in the appendix A to the general plan report. So it's very comprehensive, uh, as we were just discussing. And the reason we do this, because government code section 65400A2 requires the city to prepare a report regarding the status of the implementation of the city's general plan and its policies there within. And addition, in addition to the government code requirement, uh, just listed, program 6B that was adopted as, as a program in our housing element adds the requirement that this would also be presented to the planning commission annually in addition to, uh, being accepted by the city council and submitted to the state. So, uh, that's why this is probably. So that's why this is probably new to some of you seeing this annual report. It's prepared every year. So just, and I'll keep, gonna keep the next, the kind of summary of the, all the updates to a high level. And if we want to get into the weeds, like you said, it's about 145 some odd pages. So we can get into the specifics if we want to, but for now, I'll keep it kind of high level. So for the land use element, as you're aware, we updated the land use element with part of the update in last year. And we updated specific plan areas in the lighthouse downtown and North Fremont specific plans to allow for higher densities, multimodal improvements, and we altered the parking and design standards as well. Circulation element was also updated. We incorporated complete streets policies. And we also got the, we applied and received the grant for the safe streets and roads for all federal grant to develop the local road safety plan. So we prepared outreach for that in 2024, and then ultimately the city approved the Americans with Disabilities Act transportation plan in 2024 as well. So those policies were also incorporated into our circulation element. As you're probably all well aware, our housing element required for the update in the 2024, 2031 planning cycle required us to plan for an additional 3,654 residential units. Here, this slide shows the breakdown into income categories spread across very low, low, moderate and above moderate. So we take a look at where we're at in 2024 on that and probably not, not a very big surprise, but total completed units of 15, not a huge dent in 3,654. But as we're all aware, there's a number of constraints that lead to that number being so small. But also noted here is the amount of entitled units and permitted units, which is trending higher than, than the completed unit count. So that's typically indicative of a higher number of completed units in the following years. And you'll also see here, if you look in the columns for entitled and permitted, the highest numbers, looks like we're getting, the majority of our new residential units are coming in the form of accessory dwelling units. So something to be.
Levi, can I stop you right there? I have a question.
Sure.
On this chart, it talks about, and I'm just going to point out to where it says five plus units per structure. And under the entitlement column, there's five. Is that five total units or is that five building complexes with five or more?
It's units. Yeah, that's the unit count.
Okay.
So that, that can be, I'm inferring that's, that's a single unit that happened to have five units or a single development with five units in it that fell into that category. And then here we have just a summary of our housing applications for the 2024 reporting year as well, with a total of 74 housing units approved. And then we also have our ministerial and discretionary applications noted here as well. And as something that's keep in mind is as state law changes and makes a lot of things more ministerial that used to be discretionary, we expect, and not only state laws, but our local changes as well that were adopted at the end of last year, took a lot of, a lot of developments that would have previously required discretionary approval and made those ministerial actions. So it's, we, we look to see that number continue to move, increase in the ministerial kind of bucket, but decrease over time in that discretionary bucket.
Is, can I go back to the, is there a mechanism for us to maybe like a year end summary of completed housing projects versus just approved? Because there's a huge delta there. You know, it's great that we have 74 units approved. But in, in the end, it's what, what, what
Was constructed.
It matters, right?
Right. And I think yes, that's a discrepancy. When you look at this table, basically that's a discrepancy in that 43 in the first column, 37 in the second column, but completed is constructed. So you see it's much lower. So that, that, that data,
It is.
That data gets gathered when we prepare this report. So we do do this annually. It, it's required by April 1st. So that's typically, it's prepared in the spring after the end of the calendar year. So what you're picking up on is exactly correct.
We'll continue to see this every year.
Correct. And hopefully, and I do think with, with the changes in the, with additional water coming online, with the changes in the zoning that we're implementing our housing element, we do expect that number to increase over the, over the next few years. And we also have a lot of projects that are actually in construction right now. So, you know, it just kind of, it's a timing mechanism as well. There's, there may be years where you will have hundreds of units that come online and actually complete construction. And then, you know, you'll look back a few years and those were all entitled probably at the same time as well. So comes in waves.
I have a question. Go back to the, just, it is on this chart. Go back to the apartment complex that was approved on North Fremont, the Paul Davis project. And it was approved. What, is there a column and a row here that that would fall under since it, the building permit has not been issued? And it has not been built, but it was approved by the planning commission?
Correct. So that would have appeared in the APR that was prepared for that year. So when it was entitled, it would have appeared in that first column for that year, but that project was entitled a few years ago. So that's why it's not, those units aren't represented in this table.
Okay.
So yeah, in theory, there's a number of, there's a, there's could be a significant number of units that have been entitled in the past.
Yes.
But aren't, have not necessarily been permitted through building permit. And to Commissioner Silva's point, would also not have been constructed. So there are some, some floating units out there conceivably.
The Garden Road project.
Yeah, the old.
Yeah, the old.
Yeah.
Which we, we see usually a few years lag from entitlement to construction. So it's not uncommon. That's kind of my point earlier is that, you know, a year where you see 300 units being entitled, you can kind of expect in two years from that timeframe to start to see units being completed as well. So you'll see that influx. So that's why, you know, it's, it's disappointing to see the big difference in the entitled permitted numbers from that of the completed numbers, but we are hopeful that over time that will catch up.
It would be interesting to see a running total on the title.
Yeah.
Yeah. And entitlements don't last forever. So I think a lot of people on this commission are probably aware that your entitlement, once a project's entitled, it's good for a certain amount of time. You're usually afforded a certain amount of extensions that you can get from there. But they, they do expire over time if you don't pull building permits. Building permits also expire if, if they're not active for a period of time. So just because a project was entitled doesn't necessarily mean those units exist in perpetuity. They can, they can go away if no action's taken.
What, what would happen, I'm just kind of thinking out of the box here hypothetically, is that we've got arena allocation of 3,654. We've got a process where you can get a project entitled. And if it's, if it's not ever completed, there's a potential for that approval to be rescinded. Does that rescind, rescind, rescinding of the application then negatively affect the arena?
In a way. So what HCD, we have to report it all to HCD annually. So we report every year exactly how many units we had entitled, exactly how many units were permitted through building permit, exactly how many units were completed construction. So they, they want all that information. When it comes to your arena, all they actually care about is whether or not you have the zoning capacity to meet your arena.
Oh, right.
So where we get into now, they, they want to, they want a sincere effort to have those constructed. And they're going to start looking when, when those units are quote unquote planned for, but aren't being constructed. They will start to wonder if you've done enough to facilitate the development of those units over time. But where we can get in trouble is where if we start permitting developments on housing element sites at densities lower than what we projected, and that's where you get into what they call a no net loss situation. So we have to maintain, we have to be able to point at our zoning and say that we have the capacity to, to meet our arena allocation at all times. So if a site called for 100 units on it and we permit, a developer comes in and proposes only 50 units there and we approve that, that's okay, as long as we can point to another site saying we still have the capacity to get those 50 units elsewhere. That becomes very challenging over time though, for a city to, to do that, as you can imagine, especially when you look at our arena and how we plan for it, and there's some pretty thin margins there. So on the flip side, every time a develop, every time a site develops for housing that was not included in the housing element, you kind of get a little bit further away from a no net loss situation. So we do have that happening as well, which is, which is good. We've got sites on Garden Road that are now being converted into residential uses that were not previously contemplated for that and weren't included in the housing element. So those are kind of, you know, safety units, I guess you could say, that kind of help keep us from a no net loss. But you can't really depend on that over the long term.
Right.
Especially when you have such a large arena like we do. So it's something to definitely be cognizant of as we start seeing these developments come in and really looking at if they were included in our housing element and exactly how many units we projected there and what our risk is.
I'm assuming for these entitled, that if they don't get a WP or WPMD permit, then they're not going to move to the next column any.
So that's, that's usually a requirement during building permitting, but you're correct. And, and most, most of the time that's already been looked into before they entitle a project. But you're right, if there's not water for a project, you can't expect it to move forward.
I think I remember a few projects coming in front of us where they didn't know whether they're going to have the water or not.
Right.
Yeah. So.
Okay. I'll, I think I just have a few more slides.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, this is a good conversation. This is fine. The, so moving on, housing programs, as you're all aware, we had about 53 programs included in our housing element. Most of those require some level of, for implementation, require some level of legislative action. So that's why most of those changes will come before this group and then move on to city council for full adoption. So this is a brief summary of that. So just as a reminder, we, you know, we adopted the housing element in July of last year. So we're just shy of a year into adoption. We have about 45% of our programs are either completed, are completed and ongoing, which that means they have, they've been completed, but they have an annual requirement to kind of redo every single year. So they fall into a different category or partially completed or in progress. And that leaves us with 29 programs that are not in progress right now.
What, what is, what's an example, if there are 29 housing programs, what's an example of one of them?
Of like one that's not in progress right now? If that's what you're asking.
But a housing program, what does that mean?
So that's, zoning is so, for instance, like the implementation, phase one implementation that we brought forward at the end of last year. A good example is like when we re, we updated all the specific plans in December to allow for a higher density. That was originally identified in our housing element as a program saying the city is going to go in and we're going to change our specific plan to a higher density. And that was program 1C, I believe. And we did that. So that falls into this completed, it's a completed program now. So that falls into that category. An example of one that's not like, has not, has no progress right now is maybe some that is like, you know, there's a program that speaks about updating the highway 68 area plan to facilitate development at the MPUSD site. That's a more long range effort that's going to take obviously a lot more legislative action and public involvement to complete that program. So that would fall under that no progress to date because that has not been initiated yet. And then there's some like partially completed. There are some programs that have, that are multi-jurisdictional. So there's a, you know, a good example would be the county courthouse site. That was identified in our housing element as a housing opportunity site. And the program said that the city would rezone that site to allow for residential development. And then beyond that, it said that the city would coordinate with the county to work towards, you know, getting that land surplus and developed as housing. Well, we did our part essentially. We've, we've, we've rezoned the property. That happened in December. We've, we've made it to where, we've made all the conditions to where that property can develop residentially. However, you know, there's portions of that program that's a little bit outside of our control. So it feels a little insincere to say it's completed because it's not. But it's also needs to be noted that the portion that's not been completed is not within the city's obligations. So that's why there's all these different categories and nuances to the status.
And what type of leverage does the city have over, it would be the county over the county of Monterey to further along this process?
Leverage, probably none. And to use that word.
Could just stall.
But the, but the reason that was included in the housing element is because it had already been indicated to us that the county was looking to relocate from that location, therefore creating a vacancy of that site. And that is a very, that's a large site that has a large capacity for, for development. So that's why it got listed on there and a program created. So it's a little bit more of a long-term program, obviously, because from what I understand, there's still occupying the space. But leverage, I don't think is the right word because we can't make them really do anything. But we can help facilitate when they get to the point of relocating. If there's developers that want to look at that property, we can certainly help facilitate that conversation as it would change hands.
And so that would be the triggering mechanism for action to be taken to move this along.
Correct.
It wouldn't be something like the, the city and the county having a, some kind of a joint meeting in a conference room somewhere and say, hey, look, let's, that's it, let's work together on doing this.
Yeah, it's unlikely to be developed by the county. It's more.
Not developed by the county, but at least the, for the county to expand funds to clear the site and to make it, you know, a flat site for a developer to come in.
Potentially. There's, there's potential for that level of coordination.
Would the property transfer to the city?
That's not included in the program. Really, it's just to make sure the biggest, the big piece, city piece of that program was to make sure the zoning was in place, that someone could develop the property residentially. Previously, it was not in place. Would not allow residential development.
But once the county decides not to use it as a courthouse, and so the property then becomes usable for another activity, the county's not going to retain the title for that property. Would that then fall to the city or?
Until they, so there's a, a pretty specific process to how public agencies dispose of land. So we go through the, you know, sort of go through that process. So it's not like as soon as they stop holding court there that they no longer are in control of the property. It was still a county owned property and they had to have to go through that, that process to dispose of public land to, and likely it'd be a potential developer who would, who would be involved, interested in taking that property on.
Levi, could you remind me, was that, did the city rezone that property?
We, it was included in our multifamily residential overlay, one of the sub areas within the overlay. So we didn't change the base zoning. We simply applied the residential overlay on top of it.
What was it? Public facility?
I think it was either public institutional or something, something like that.
Sorry to beat this dead horse. This, the, the county courthouse is on, it is in the county of Monterey's jurisdiction.
Stadium Monterey.
So it's all in the city of Monterey's, but they were using it as a county courthouse.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Moving on, we'll just wrap up these other elements. We have the conservation element that is being further implemented in 2024. The city met its goals for our Ambag greenhouse gas audit. Safety element, which was, of course, was included in the update from last year. We updated the wildfire protection plan completed for the city's of Monterey, Carmel, Battersea and Pacific Grove. And implementation for that began in 2024. And as far as for our historic preservation element, we continue to implement our Mills Act program, including Mills Act contract inspections and looking over the maintenance schedules and investments into those properties. And with.
Just quickly, when will the city complete its assessment of the Mills Act program?
Yeah. So we've completed the economic study. So we're preparing to bring that forward with changes to our Mills Act program and codifying that into chapter 38 of the code. Right now, that program exists entirely in an adopted resolution, which is not necessarily ideal for regulatory, you know, standards that apply to historic properties. It should probably also be codified in our historic. It should probably also be codified in our historic, um, uh, zoning code as well. But we plan on bringing that forward with the econ, uh, the, uh, the economic analysis to, to council soon. It would most likely will go to HPC rather than this group for recommendation prior to going, um, to, uh, city council then. But we'll definitely keep this group in, in the loop and keep you guys aware of what, what the changes are proposed. We look for that to happen probably in the next, probably over the summer of this year. And I'll wrap up with that. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution accepting the two thousand and twenty-four general plan annual report for review and comment. Happy to answer any more questions?
Any more questions for Levi?
I have a comment, not a question, and that is, um, in talking about the known net loss policy, that is likely to put some pressure on the coastal commission to, uh, amend their ways. Because they have been, in my opinion, somewhat abusive in their power-hungry ways of denying permits for, uh, maintaining and saving residential structures along the coast. So hopefully this is going to cause some, some, uh, paradigm shift there.
Yeah. Definitely a lot of competing interests at the state agency level.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
So should we just, um, do a roll call?
We'll still do public comment. So we'll check for public comment.
Anybody in the audience? Nope. Um, anybody on, Erica?
Uh, there are no hands raised.
All right.
I couldn't see that there's nobody back behind me when I said that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't know that.
Heard something up there.
So, um, should we just do a roll call with Erica?
Sure.
Erica?
Oh, do we, do we have a formal motion?
Let's do, uh, we, we can discuss and then do a motion.
Yeah, uh, any discussion?
No, it's a, it's a huge document and, and I reviewed it, uh, and, um, I feel like I kind of understand it, good work. Uh, I'm, I'm in support of moving it along.
Yeah, whenever I get these massive reports, I'm not going to read them, I'm just going to wait for the summary.
Smart.
And you did a good job.
Great summary, yes. This was very helpful, very, very helpful because in one page it condensed the hundred and forty-six, yeah, okay.
I'm happy to hear that. We're also preparing, I think if, since a lot of this conversation, um, seemed to focus on the housing element, progress made towards that, I think that's at the top of a lot of people's minds. We're preparing, um, a, a more, uh, kind of specific to the housing element tracking sheet, uh, that would show some of those data points and the, the status of those housing element programs over time. So we'll be posting that on our Have Your Say Monterey page. We have a Have Your Say Monterey page for just the housing element implementation. Um, so if you haven't seen that, if you're not getting updates on that, feel free to subscribe to that online. Uh, but that's where we're kind of tracking all this as, as we go. Um, some good visuals on there and it's kind of color-coded as far as where we're looking. And, and then we'll be, uh, in the near future also posting some, uh, a more comprehensive timeframe throughout the entire planning cycle, when we can expect things to be fully implemented and.
Levi, is the housing element, um, complete? I mean, are we, are we waiting for HCD?
No, we're, we're fully adopted and certified. So that's why we're in the full swing of implementation. Um, we're in full compliance with the state, um, in terms of our housing element was found to be in, in substantial compliance. They certified it, so we're, we're all good with the state there. Uh, as long as we continue implementing our plan, we'll, we'll be in good standing with them. Obviously, like I said, I think over time, hope to see the unit count of completed units, uh, rise so that we can, um, you know, meet, re, reach our goals. But yeah, that, 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 that conversation may turn at some point.
Well, congratulations to you and the city staff and to Andrew for making that happen.
Appreciate that.
And I loved Bob's idea of the running totals for the, um, entitled permitted and completed because we can all remember so many that have been approved but not built yet. So that would be real helpful.
There's also the Caruso's Corner, you know, the Casa.
Yes, yes.
North Fremont and, uh, what's the other street there?
That, that one's the ho, that one's a hotel, I believe.
Oh, it's a hotel.
The Crusoes, yeah, Abbott Hotel.
To the right, uh, there was going to be a housing development near the empty lot near the liquor store.
Yeah, that's the one I believe Commissioner Freeman was talking about, yes, that one, which, um, that one's not gone. It's, they're looking at modifying it again, we just up the, that's, that's kind of the downside when you go in and you up the zoning over, all over the city, uh, a lot of the people who are looking at proposed developments are now looking at what they could do under the new rules. So some people's response to that is let's, let's, uh, take a step back and see if we can maximize density for even more units, which we, we want, so.
It's interesting with, with the Monterey One Water Projects and the Cal Ams pushing forward with the D cell project. You know, we may actually see, uh, water permits locally for, I'd say, two years or something.
Yeah, so, uh, from what we've been told, though, I believe the water allocated to the city will be available in the next calendar year. Now, as, as everyone here is aware, I'm sure that the CDO for the setting of new water meters will continue to be in place. So where this really benefits, what properties this really benefits are those with existing meters on site. That can, that have expansion or redevelopment of the site under the existing water meter. So unfortunately, it doesn't alleviate our need to set new water meters. So that's unfortunate, but for properties that are previously developed with existing meters, it really, uh, creates a lot of opportunities for those.
Yeah, but I think if, I mean, from all appearances, Cal Am is going to build this D cell plant at some point, and that, that will affect the, uh, the water meter situation.
Absolutely.
Is there, um, any formal mechanism that the city has in place once this water is available for prioritizing its use?
So the city hasn't adopted a water distribution or priority or allocation policy right now. Um, it's definitely something that I think will become before council before the end of this calendar year. Think, you know, getting, getting a lot of water without a plan on how you're going to use it's not very helpful. And I think the, the council is well aware of that, and I think it's, it's definitely on their minds.
From your comment, when you were answering Dan's question, it seems like the applicable, if you have to have a meter, that's going to be good for ADUs, but not much else.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a lot of sites, like for instance, the, the Caruso's Corner site, it would be redeveloped. It has an existing meter, so, um, there, there are sites out there that are poised for, for redevelopment with existing meters, but you're, you're correct, even, even with ADUs, the water district, from what I, as, as I understand it, can oftentimes that, that water comes out of your water credit or your property. So it's not unheard of to have people have to reduce bathrooms or remove fixtures in order to facilitate the development of their ADUs as well, so.
So should we make a motion?
That would be excellent.
All right, so I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution accepting the two thousand and twenty-four general plan annual report for review and comment.
Second?
I'll second it.
So Erica, we finally, um, motion and a second. Can you please do a roll call for us?
Sure, Chair Bluth.
Aye.
Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Otassa.
Yes.
Motion carries with a vote of four.
Any commissioner comments?
Oh, the, the, you're, you're mentioning, uh, something a couple of planning commission hearings ago regarding a, uh, PC field trip to Santa Rosa. Is that still, or is that, has that happened or?
That has passed, yes, that was the Planning Commissioners Academy. Did not, I was, I was actually out during, out of, out of the office during that time and wasn't able to attend. But, um, certainly want to, uh, uh, on our, on our radars to get, uh, so typically we get an email kind of giving us the information as to where it's going to be and things, but I think we're going to be a little bit more proactive next year to give you guys a little bit more notice and heads up because I know it's something you're all, uh, have expressed interest in attending, but usually it's just too short of a turnaround by the time they tell us where it's going to be and everything and when you guys can make arrangements. So, uh, hoping to get a, a little bit more notice next year so that we, so if you guys are interested in attending, you're, you're actually able to.
Either that or have some type of, uh, online Zoom type feature where if it's, if it's not convenient for people to show up physically, that we could at least attend virtually.
Yes, and, and I think I mentioned previously as well, the, the California Chapter APA Conference is going to be in Monterey this year and, and Sep, uh, towards the end of September. So that's also a great opportunity. It's not just for planners, planning commissioners often attend these as well. So I think it's a great opportunity to go and it's going to be in your backyard as well, so. And then the national conferences in, uh, at the end of March this month into April, there is a virtual attendance, uh, option there as well. If you want to look at the program and see if that interests you, um, feel free to let staff know if you look at that. And we do, we do have a budget for training opportunities, so, uh, let us know. But yeah, I think the California, we're, we're very excited to be hosting the conference in, at the end of September, so.
Good.
Great.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
This is totally, you might not know the answer, it might be the police department or something, but a neighbor asked me yesterday, uh, up in the hill here, the Presidio of Monterey. If there's a, a disaster, is there any, any kind of agreement between the city and the Presidio of Monterey for opening those gates if the worst comes to the worst? Do you, are you aware of anything?
I'm not aware of an agreement in place and I don't want to speak out of turn. I can certainly look into that and, and circle back with you.
Good question.
Yeah.
I have no idea, I thought that's actually a good, a good idea.
I'm not sure the details, but I think the city has an agreement with DLI for fire support. And then there's all the, um, fire roads that have been built up there twenty, thirty years ago. For any wildfire.
Yeah, I'm just not sure how specifically as it, as it relates to the Presidio. I know that, I know, I, I don't have the, as much background on the, the opening enclosure of the streets through there, um.
Talk about thorny, I mean.
Yeah.
It's, if something were to happen, it would be great to have this way of, of getting cars through there, but it's a whole notification.
I know that through the update of the safety element, the evacuation plan, it does not factor in those roads being opened up.
I'm sure the army would say it's a secure.
Yeah, so.
The only access is the other, our city, um, first responders going in. No open traffic, um, going through.
Right.
The river.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I, you know, I didn't expect an answer, so thank you.
Yeah.
So, um, city council meeting, um, previous, they did bring up the bike, um, equipment rental, um, issue and approved it. Um, I did call and, um, made a public comment, asking about the safety issues. And, um, there was some discussion afterwards. I think there was consensus on council that that's an issue that should be addressed. Afterwards, I did talk to Mayor Williamson and he suggested the planning commission should agendize. So I don't know whether it falls into our purview or not, but I think given comments that Sandy made a few months ago and other, um, interest in it, it might be worth agendizing if it's something that falls in our purview.
Yeah, um, I, I, I don't think that it does, uh, simply because the planning commission's tasked with, uh, overseeing chapter thirty-eight, which is specific to the zoning code and, and what's within that and the general plan. So none of that, there's not really anything in the zoning code or chapter thirty-eight or in the general plan that would enforceably, uh, impact the recreation trail. The recreation trail is not, um, privately owned or developed, so it doesn't, zoning doesn't typically come into play as, as far as the operation of the trail goes. It's, uh, I can find out who the appropriate party would be so that, um, so that that can get agendized by that group and that this group sounds like would make, like to make public comment or be involved in that, um, to some extent. So I can certainly find out who that would be, but, uh, it, it would not fall under the purview of the planning commission.
It does fall in the purview of the city council.
Everything falls under the purview of the city council, yeah.
I mean, that's the last time we, you, you looked into it and said, well, it's not our purview, but we can address the city council, which.
I did.
In a way you did, but was council or just, uh, the mayor?
That was a council. Oh, I called in during, um, city council meeting and made a public comment about it.
Right.
Um, the discussion did include, um, safety and particularly on the bike path. And then afterwards I did ask, um, um, Mayor Williamson where he thought it was going to go and whether or not something that warranted further discussion, and he suggested the planning commission should deal with it.
I see, yeah.
I thought, well, maybe that's something, you know, particularly given Sandy said, and that would be, um, potentially worthwhile if it, if it was doable.
I think that's ordinance, that's twenty-two, isn't it?
I think so. I don't know if you're, I don't know if this group's familiar with.
The, of the rec trail.
So that falls under, uh, so it's treated, it falls under our traffic and engineering typically. So it's like, it's in, but it, which is our streets are enforced, like the rules of our streets get enforced by police department. And that's why it's very much, it, it wouldn't be code enforcement that's out there, uh, enforcing upon rules of the recreation trail. So that's why it's a very, it, in every way we've looked at it, it seems like a top-down topic that would start at the council level, be discussed as to how they would policies they'd want to put in place to then discuss who would be enforcing those policies and those, those parameters that were put in place.
And we don't have a police commission or a public works commission in the city that could address this.
I'm not sure of what, I'm not sure the specific boards and committees at public works, staffs, but I'm, I'm not familiar with one. I think there is a traffic, um, I think there is a border committee that, that deals with the, the traffic, um, issues, but I'm not positive.
I think based on Mayor Williamson's suggestion to you, he doesn't know what the governing authority is either.
Yeah.
So.
It can be confusing.
Maybe we were being volunteered in that, so, but yeah, I think we'd be willing to involve, willing to involve.
The mayor could always just form a subcommittee to address this. Could do that and with volunteers, they're interested.
I can, I can, uh, I can put a, uh, inquiry into, to put the city attorney's office and get a firm answer on who and what process this should be.
You think, uh, the police chief would be the one who would be most interested, actually?
Yeah.
They're so understaffed, though.
Really?
Yeah, no, it's, uh, it's pretty tight on their part. So I think it would, it would be a policy issue. And so that's why probably city council would be the, the best to handle it, but they're busy too. So it's a matter of where you get the attention, um, to be able to look at what all the issues are. And there's a lot of conflicting issues. There's people who love those electric bikes, there's people who like to jog, people like to walk, there's tourism. And then there's the extra people renting bikes, which is also great, but all falls into the same categories of, how do we put this together in the city so it all works?
Right.
Would there be any legal remedy to just outright prohibit these, uh, fast, big tire electric bikes?
Well, I think there's three categories from what I learned, and the third category is prohibited, but there's nobody there to enforce it. So it's, um, there is a, I think a speed limit of thirteen miles an hour in the Pacific Grove part of the trail, but there's nothing really on the Monterey side. So it's really an open.
Open season, right.
Yeah, there, so there's, but I think it's going to become much more popular. And the more of these bike rentals that are available, the more it raises the potential that it's be, um, an issue through some happenstance or accident. So it's, it is worth, um, addressing if we can find an appropriate way of doing it.
Definitely. Bike safety data is really interesting, as it's a very interesting topic as you get into it. And it's not always, uh, intuitive as you think it would be. You know, I think, uh, we, there's a public comment made at the council meeting. The statistics show the more bikes you put on the road, the, your, your rate of bike accidents actually decreases. Uh, recently saw studies in, uh, Europe, I think it was Copenhagen has the most cyclists in any, any city in the world, and they have the fewest amount of bicycle-related collisions. They also have the lowest helmet wearing rate in the, in the entire country and also the lowest amount of collision. So it's kind of, it's a very interesting topic when you start looking into the data points of it. And, uh, and it's not always what, yeah, you, you would assume more bikes means. And, uh, and it's not always what, yeah, you, you would assume more bikes means more potential for collision and more incidents, but it's not always the case. So it's definitely a topic that I think whenever it gets agendized and discussed in detail will be pretty interesting.
Yeah, I think the biggest concern is not just the number of bikes, but the mixed use of the, the trail by different kind of bikes and people.
Yeah.
And then strollers, there's those four-wheel bikes that are out there, I mean, it's a.
Dogs on retractable leashes.
Yeah.
Gets me every time.
I mean, there is a lot going on.
And don't get me going on the ground squirrels.
This is going to be a fun topic when it gets agendized, I can already tell.
There's a lot of people that are going to have their opinions, I'm sure, all good ones. Um, so do you have any comments for us?
Uh, not a lot, other than what's in the report. Chair Bluth already touched on the council action that pertains to bike rental being, now being allowed in the C two and C R zoning districts, so that was approved for first reading. Will go forward to second reading and then become effective thirty days later. Right now, we have one item that's tentatively scheduled for our March twenty-fifth planning commission meeting. That's a, uh, staff's working on a draft ordinance for, uh, to incorporate the requirements of SB nine into our zoning code so that we can build on what's already there for the state level. So we're still working on that with our legal team and getting that refined. So if that's ready, uh, in order, in time for us to meet our publishing deadlines, then that'll be on that agenda. But right now, that's the only item, so if that falls off, there will not be a meeting.
Okay. All right, let's see what time it is, five thirty-one, we'll end this planning commission meeting, thank you very much.